Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the twenty twenty five A A C O Dublin City Council Candidate Forum. My name is Hong Qiu. I am honored to serve as a board member of the Asian American Coalition of Ohio, AKA A A C O. A A C O is a nonpartisan five oh one C three organization dedicated to educating, engaging, and empowering the Asian community to participate fully in all aspects of society through community service, civic engagement, and leadership development. To learn more about our work, please visit us online or follow us on social media. A healthy democracy depends on informed and active citizens. People who engage in civic life hold leaders accountable and make thoughtful decisions at the ballot box. Without an informed public, the strength and legitimacy of our democracy are at risk. With that being said, we are deeply grateful to our audience for joining us with open minds and active interest and to our candidates for running for Dublin City Council and for meeting the voters. So here is how tonight's forum will go. For our candidates, each of you will receive three the same questions to and have up to three minutes to respond to each. I will post each question in the chat. Please keep an eye on the timer, which will be visible in my background. You will hear a short music cue when your time is up. And for our audience, please use the Q and A function to submit your question at any time. Depending on how we are doing on time, we may hold a brief Q and A session toward the end. Regardless, all submitted questions will be shared with the candidate after the forum. And we'll post tonight's recording on YouTube. You can get the event recording link from our Facebook account. So we saw further deal as we all being very anxious and excitedly waiting. Let's begin tonight's forum. First question is going to be a very softball question. So here's question number one. We are grateful for your commitment to serving our community by running for Dublin City Council. Could you start by telling us a bit about yourself and what inspired you to enter this race? Next one, Dr. Joy Kuns. Joy, you are on mute.
Please.
Hello, good evening. My name is Dr. Joy Kuns Lewis. I am a resident of Dublin. I've been in Dublin for close to twenty years. I love Dublin. And just a little bit of background about myself. I I have a PhD in organization and management with a focus in human resources management. I am a vice president of of human resources and risk management for Children's Hunger Alliance. And also, um, on the side, I am actually the president of the board and CEO of the Asian American Commerce Group. I also have been involved with the Asian Festival. You know, I have been with, uh, I have worked for both the state of Ohio, I've worked for the state of Ohio, private, nonprofit. I've worked for Nationwide Insurance Mid Ohio Regional Planning Commission, Kayahoga Metropolitan Housing Commission, uh, Housing Authority. And, uh, I have worked for, um, American Red Cross, actually, for ten years. So I have a combined, um, academic, business, and profit, nonprofit, public service, state jobs. And I think because my nature is really about servant, serving, servant leadership. It's one of my, um, uh, actually is a mission. So I'm interested, I am running actually for Dublin City Council Ward Two. I live in the world, of course, I'm in Ballantry, and I'm a member of the Homeowners Association. I'm a board member for the second time. So the first time was about six years ago, and I helped create the mission of the Ballantry uh, Community Association that is to preserve the, our property values, enhance our property values, and, uh, continue to have, uh, quality of life for our residents here in Ballantry. So that takes me to why, you know, I started to be interested in running for Dublin City Council. Um, as a matter of fact, when Mount Carmel, uh, before Mount Carmel, Dublin was built, I was at the Rotary Club, and the speaker at that time was the president of Mount Carmel. She didn't know that Dublin has the highest Asian American population. And so when she found out about it, eh, eh, they invited me at the board and actually.
Sorry, time, yeah, time's up.
Okay, all right. And 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 just the the last thing, I've worked with, of course, Hong and Vincent, you know, uh, collaborated with the Ohio Asian Coalition Association. Thank you.
All right, awesome, thank you. And next is Wendy.
Hello, my name is Wendy Johnson, and I would also like to thank our hosts for bringing us all together this evening. I feel very empowered, uh, sitting here with so many talented, experienced people. Um, as I said, my name is Wendy Johnson, and my husband Jay and I have called Dublin home for more than thirty years. We've raised two boys here. Our son Ben is now a senior at Miami University, and our youngest son Jake is a junior at Ohio State. I moved, uh, to the Columbus area from a very small town in northwest Ohio. Uh, I came here to study chemistry at Autobahn College. And after I got my degree in chemistry, I began a career in research and development in manufacturing at Ashland Chemical, which was located on a very beautiful campus, it's still there, beautiful campus on Blazer Parkway. And over the past twenty-five years, I've worked first as a product manager for Metler Toledo, also a local-based company. And now I work as a product marketing manager at Dell Technologies. Uh, these roles have given me the opportunity to travel internationally and work with different cultures. And they've also been about listening to people, uh, bringing together teams that have different perspectives, sorting through all sorts of competing priorities, managing multi-million dollar budgets, and ultimately being responsible for delivering results that satisfy the stakeholders. And I think these are exactly the type of skills that anyone that sits on a city council anywhere really needs to have. You have to be able to weigh trade-offs and scrutinize budgets. And what's very important for me is keeping the residents' voices at the center of all of our decision-making. So maybe that's what inspired me to run. Like many of you, I care very, very deeply about what makes Dublin special. I love our tree-lined streets, I love our parks and our trails. I love the sense of safety and belonging that I hope we all feel, um, as residents here. And I, like Amy, hope very, very much that my boys not only choose to return to Dublin, but have options that will allow them to do that. So that's why I entered this race. I I want to thoughtfully guide development in Dublin so that it not only avoids harm to the neighborhoods who are adjacent to that new development, but truly enhances, uh, all of our neighborhoods. And I also want to champion solutions that will allow our seniors to remain here as they age and for our children and for young families to return to Dublin and put their own roots down here. So thank you for listening to a little bit about me, and I look forward to the rest of the evening.
Thank you so much, Wendy. Last but not least, John. You're on mute. Please unmute first.
Yes, um, first, I want to thank the Asian American Coalition of Ohio for inviting us, um, here tonight. Um, I'm, uh, grateful to be part of this panel. Um, obviously, we're here because of the love that we have for Dublin and the fact that we want to make the city, uh, the best city to live in, um, in the world. So a little bit, um, about me, um, I have been, um, in central Ohio for about a quarter of a century now. Um, previously on the East Coast in Washington, D.C., um, and then moved west to here to go to Ohio State, um, to attend law school. Prior in D.C., I I received my master's degree on international affairs. Um, here in Dublin, the reason that I'm running, um, to be, uh, Ward Two Representative on City Council, a couple of reasons. One, the love that I have for this city. Uh, this is a world-class city. Um, it is also a city that you can say is very international. As a matter of fact, twenty percent of the city, um, is of Asian or identify as Asian. So you can't get more than that in terms of the international flavor that we have in this city. Also, this is also a city of fifty thousand people where we have, we host two international events every year, that being the Memorial Tournament and Dublin Irish Festival. So and myself being a native, um, of outside the country, uh, of the Caribbean, so I feel that I belong here perfectly. And therefore, I think now is the time for me to step up, um, take the experience that I have as a serving, as a leader, um, of a neighborhood association, uh, that I have done for a long time, where I have gained experience in zoning, rezoning, uh, dealing with safety issue, working with law enforcement, uh, period before planning zoning as well as city council. Um, so I I I do feel that it is now time for me to step up to the plate and try to offer, um, the best advice, uh, ideas, suggestions, uh, working with others, collaborating, um, and trying to move our city forward. Uh, now, um, as I've said, uh, this is a great city, wonderful, we have so many great things going for us. Um, there's no doubt about that. But obviously, um, as we move on, as we're getting bigger and bigger, um, certainly, um, we have to, you know, try to do things different here and there. Um, but also new voices can also help, um, in that aspect. Uh, and so this is where, you know, I come in, you know. Um, as I've said, I've worked tirelessly on behalf of my neighborhoods. Um, and I should say that, um, I come from a civic, um, Ohio-led civic association, uh, which means that, um, though elected, but volunteered my time. And so I'm looking forward to serve Dublin in the future.
Awesome. Thank you so much, Ron. So that concludes our first round of questions, which is, um, the the begin, the introduction to the voters of our wonderful candidates. And the second one is the following. We are now just about a month away from the general election on November fourth, and with early voting already underway. I hope each of your campaigns is going where. If elected to City Council, what would be your top three priorities and why? So we are going to start with Wendy.
Yes, thank you for the question. Um, my priorities as a city council member will be to guide growth in Dublin's special areas. Um, these special areas include the West Innovation District, uh, the southwest area. City Council has also identified several revitalization projects, which I fully support, uh, the revitalization of Metro Place and other business districts that exist within Dublin. So that's priority number one, is to make sure that that growth, um, again, doesn't harm the adjacent communities and in fact enriches those communities and and brings more value, uh, to the residents and and in those areas. Uh, my second priority will be, um, to champion. And a city council doesn't have a tremendous amount of sway when it comes to the types of housing developments that are, uh, placed into our city. Um, those decisions are driven by the developers themselves, but city council does have the tools, uh, to ensure that additional residential spaces can create, can carve out spaces for affordable and diverse living options. Um, you know, right now, we have the All in Dublin proposal, that's before the Planning and Zoning Board, and I think it's a wonderful proposal. And I would like to champion, um, additional solutions like that within the city limits. And then finally, the third priority for me will be to to create new spaces for people to come together with ideas. Um, I think it's pretty typical that a lot of people get involved when something starts to happen in their own backyard, right? When the shovels, you know, hit the dirt, when the bulldozers show up, that seems to to really spur, uh, community engagement and involvement. And I think we can do a lot better in that area. I think that we can create community councils, call them idea labs, uh, there there's all kinds of options to bring the community together as planning, as the, as the city council sets the vision for the city every year, um, to bring those ideas together. We have a wealth of knowledge, probably untapped knowledge with the, within the residents of Dublin, and we also have a very, uh, vibrant youth community. So I think bringing intergenerational roots together for sharing ideas or just ideation in general um, is an excellent idea, and it's something that I hope to champion, champion as a city council member. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you so much, Wendy. Uh, next is Ron.
Yes, um, thank you, Ron. So my, the three priorities, um, that I have, uh, one is, uh, keeping seniors, our senior citizens, um, in Dublin. Um, two is working on youth, uh, mental health, uh, and three, um, is communication and engagement. And so on the first, um, issue, I think in my conversation throughout the city, um, uh, with seniors, a great many of them or too many of them are no longer living, um, in Dublin. Now, they are using services in Dublin, they do come to shop in Dublin, but they no longer reside in Dublin. And so, uh, my question is, you know, why is that? Obviously, um, not having affordable housing, um, is a number one, um, issue. And so, um, if, um, elected as a Ward Two representative, that will be something that I will address on behalf of our seniors, um, under council. I think that we can do better, um, and in terms of, um, suggestions and then proposals, particularly with, you know, building, maybe we should build pocket neighborhoods. That's one possibility, but I think, um, those issues that we have to bring forward and 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 address. The second issue that I mentioned is dealing with, um, youth, uh, mental health. Uh, now, I think that, and that, and I'm very happy, grateful that to hear there are other members of this panel, um, you know, who sees, uh, mental health, uh, as, or mental well-being, um, as an issue that we have to address, that we have to tackle on. Um, but I think that, uh, we have, we have to look out for the future of this city. If we're gonna move on, be the best city in the world, um, connect and engage, but we do have to look, um, for, um, for those youth out there and 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 we have to do better. When I say doing better, I'm talking about what kind of service that we have, that we can provide to these, uh, youth. What kind of programming that we have available? Um, are we working with the school district, uh, which is another issue, that there has to be a way that we can work with the school district, um, and and looking out after our youth? So, um, I do think that there's a way to go here, uh, and if elected, um, I certainly, uh, will be working on behalf of of our future, um, so to speak. And the third issue that that I have is, um, communication and engagement. Now, um, uh, Dublin as a city, we have done pretty well. It is true that we've done pretty well in communicating. However, um, the issue out, the rezoning proposal and now tabled out of, um, Ballantry has shown that there is, uh, there's a long way to go in terms of how we communicate with our residents, how we communicate, um, with what's going on throughout the city and also as impacted, um, the neighborhoods. Uh, here at London Farms, I have been front and center, um, in dealing with, uh, communication with the city. So I do know, I have the experience, um, and 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 understanding or, um, have, uh, some knowledge in terms of how we can do better, uh, to make sure that citizens feel, or the residents feel like, hey, they're part of the process. So that's what I'm for, and I feel like that I will carry on, uh, those issues.
Thank you so much, Ron. Next is, uh, Dr. Kuns.
Hello, thanks for this opportunity, and, um, it's it's so interesting to hear everybody. And certainly, all of us, as I I have heard, are really after the best interests of Dublin. And that's exactly why I'm running and why I will focus, focus on my priorities. Now, my campaign vision is One Dublin, All Generations, Stronger Together. Having said that, having all those ideas, you know, top priorities of the the other candidates, I will focus on because I am part of the Planning and Zoning Commission, uh, committee of and board member of Ballantry. I certainly would address as One Dublin to unite our neighborhoods. Our neighborhoods not within Ward Two, that is my priority, I have to focus on my ward, of course. And I, as as a representative of, uh, Ballantry and the other surrounding communities in Ward Two, I would really look at the rezoning, land use, and zoning conflicts that are existing right now. Um, I have been meeting with the, uh, the city manager, the planning, uh, director, the traffic director, economic, economic director, in looking at this. So that's one that I will certainly address because I want to go back to my community and say, hey, I've really done something in that. Now, One Dublin, because I want our neighborhoods to be united, to have a voice, to have a strong voice in this rezoning, land use, and zoning conflicts. So it's one. All generations, because I will make sure that we have safe streets for our children, opportunities for families, and dignity for seniors. Like Jean has mentioned about seniors looking at their mental health and, you know, well-being in particular. Stronger together, that's the other thing. And, um, uh, I'm interested in revitalization of future and of of Metro Cent, Metro Center. That's very exciting, actually. One of council's visionary goals is to revitalize the Metro Center, transforming that, um, a legacy office park into a more mixed-use, vibrant district. I want Dublin to be the city of choice. I want Dublin to continue to have, to be a desirable place to live. And with that, I know if communication channels are built and everybody, uh, and I am able to afford and listen to each one, act as one community, Dublin's future going to be limitless. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Kuns. Concludes our second round of the question, and then the, here's the last one, which many of you have touched on. So Dublin's history reflects the story of America itself. A transformation from a small farming community in the eighteen hundreds to the vibrant suburban and business hub we know today. This shows how powerful good decision-making can be. If elected as a city council member, how will you shape Dublin's future? Anticipating demographic change shifts and fostering continued prosperity and opportunity while engaging and embracing the talents and contributions of all communities, including the Asian community, whose voices have often been underrepresented? And next is Ron. John?
Yes, uh, thank you for the question. Um, and as I mentioned earlier, um, at, uh, my opening, that Dublin is, um, twenty percent, oh, identify as as Asian. Um, and so out of that, the, there is a large, the large Japanese community, um, in Ohio, um, or in the state, yes, in the state of Ohio, resides here, um, in Dublin. Um, we have more than twenty Japanese companies operate here in in the, um, in the city. And obviously, on the plans is not to fall away with research and development, um, uh, near Dublin. So having said that, um, it, um, troubles me, um, to see um, that, uh, the recent, um, proposed legislation such as House Bill One, um, as well as, uh, Senate Bill Eighty-eight, um, those I believe were called the Ohio Property Protection Act, um, which would prevent foreign, uh, adversaries and affiliates from acquiring real property. So if we want to make Dublin, and we want to continue, um, in the direction that we're going as a international city, um, well, we do have a responsibility, um, to tackle, um, these, uh, issues because I do believe that, um, the way these, uh, bills are written, uh, it would be a detriment, um, I think, um, to the standing of Dublin. Obviously, Dublin is in the state of Ohio, so anything that is passed, we would be impacted, affected as well. So I think that we have a responsibility, um, as leaders, um, of, uh, of our city, uh, to, uh, to have a voice, uh, as I heard, um, throughout, uh, uh, from the panelists tonight, um, throughout this meeting. And so, uh, there is something that I think that, you know, we can work on, um, in terms of, you know, why we think this legislation will, um, if we think there's a benefit to this legislation, then we must come out and say so. If we don't think that there is, um, as currently constituted, um, then, you know, probably need to call the governor's office. Um, so, and just in case if the bill gets there. Also, I also think that Dublin can do, um, can do a better job with regard to, um, having sister-sister relationship, um, with other cities throughout the world. Um, I mean, there is, um, an agreement with, uh, Mashiko, uh, city of Mashiko in Japan. And, uh, and I think we can broaden that, um, uh, in terms of, um, some, you know, some other continents in the world as well, uh, whether it's in South America, um, whether it's in Africa, uh, or the parts of Asia. So I think that as we broaden our perspective, um, it will be much better for us as we continue to grow, uh, in being this, uh, international, this vibrant international city, um, that that, uh, we are, uh, striving to be. And so there are areas that we can work in, um, and so, um, and if elected as Ward Two Rep, that's what I'll be focusing on in terms of making Dublin better for all. Thank you.
Thank you so much, John. Uh, so next one is Wendy. Wendy, sorry. Think I didn't say that clearly. Sorry. Wendy, please.
I'm sorry about that. Um, you know, we all know that in order to stay economically viable, that Dublin must attract businesses that will strongly, contribute to our tax base, which means salaries and, um, net profits. And I think one of the things that will continue, well, two of the things that will continue to attract innovative, profitable companies to Dublin is our diverse and broadly skilled talent pool, which comes from all demographics. And also the infrastructure readiness that, uh, city council for years has thoughtfully planned. Um, you know, city council has the tools to continue to court companies with economic incentives, but I think it's also important that city councils stay focused on courting innovative companies who are not only interested in economic incentives, but are interested in putting down roots in our city because they see that city leaders are partners that understand both opportunities and risks with investment and development. You know, Jean also mentioned, and I I think it's really important to point out that as as bills move through our state legislature, that city councils stay aware and communicate with each other and and come to a collective understanding on on where the city would stand on some of these bills. Um, House Bill One, Senate Bill Eighty-eight could potentially be very harmful to businesses across the state. And, um, it is my hope that all of us here on this call are open to having those tough conversations and being willing to, you know, to draw a line in the sand on on saying that we're we're against that type of discrimination because that type of divisiveness and erosion of civil liberties can really only lead to, um, harm to our communities, so. Uh, thank you.
Thank you, Wendy. Uh, next is, uh, Dr. Kuns.
I love this question, actually. As as a visionary leader, I am always about the future. And as I've said earlier, Dublin's future is limitless. Let, when we talk about history, um, we have, as a human resources leader, to me, perf, uh, past performance is a predictor of future performance. Look at how we have performed in the past. You know, we have gradually, and now, uh, uh, gradually grow. We still have one thousand five hundred acres underdeveloped. What do we do with that when our future is limitless? I go back to my campaign, um, I would say, vision, which is One Dublin. I would like as, uh, as part of our future, to unite Dublin. We have a very diverse community. I know most of you mentioned the Japanese community. I don't know if you know that we have a big Pakistani community. I was there three weeks ago in their Pakistani celebration. Two weeks ago, I was with Jobs Ohio where we have. General councils from different countries, Malaysia, uh, China, Taiwan, Philippines. Uh, where I was the ambassador bec- again, because of the Asian American Commerce Group. We have a big population here in Dublin and really they're going to shape our future. That's part of our future. All generations, we have, I will look at, you know, how are, are children. They're, they're very technology, all of us, of course, technology oriented. So I will be interested as, to shape our future because Dublin wants to be the most connected community. Technologically, socially and via transportation networks. So we need to look at that. All generations, stronger together. Again, we are very diverse. Still getting bigger to be a very diverse community. When we, we have to listen to everybody and that's the thing. How do we shape our future is having these communication channels where we get their input, where we get their views. Again. Stronger together as One Dublin. Uh, another is that revitalization and future of Metro Center. I'm very, very excited about that. Because one of council's visionary goals is to rev- vitalize the Metro Center. Transforming a legacy office. That's a park into a mixed-use and vibrant district. So I would say, again, uh, very exciting to be here in Dublin.
Thank you so much, Dr. Coon. Uh, I think that concludes our three rounds of question. I know that the time is really short, three minutes, it's not doing justice for all the things that you are doing or you plan to do. But still appreciate that you take this really very brief time to share with the audience. As to your plan for the future of a city of Dublin. So, uh, right now it's nine oh one, I think it's kind, it's getting late. Why don't we wrap up tonight? I know there are some questions in the Q and A asking about redistricting, which it's n- not really, um. Probably not the best place for us to address at the moment. There is a school district candidate forum that's going to happen on the seventeenth. So I hope everybody will log in and hear about from, directly from our candidates. And before we wrap up, uh, one, you know, each of you, if there's anything you would like, just one or two sentences to wrap up the night. Uh, we can do so. Anybody wants to share anything with the, the audience? Uh, this is going to be on YouTube. Uh, we will be sharing the link once the, uh, the video is uploaded. Uh, we are going to post it on our Facebook.
All right. I want to say something, just to summarize. You know, my point again, I think all of us want to have One Dublin. I think all of us want to listen to every segment of the population and. All of us, of course, if we work together, when elected, those in the council work together. We, we li- we will listen and we can act as one community. Dublin's future is going to be limitless. Thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you so much. Any other final thought?
That, uh, what has made Dublin great? We have some visionary leadership over the period of, in different periods for different ideas. But really, the people here have made this city great. It's not, it's not Muirfield. It's not two seventy. It's the people that got into this community. Decided they were going to create a new community that was entirely different from the rest of Appalachian America, which we are part of Ohio and Kentucky and West Virginia. And I think our strength is that, that our people came to change and our people made the changes. And it was tough, we were sued a lot from nineteen eighty to eighty-five because our laws were so unique. And the developers didn't want to see them and didn't want them spreading, as they told us. But our people stuck, stuck by their guns through all that trauma and said, no, we're going to have a new community. And it's going to be different from the rest of America. And here we are, you know. Years later, uh, considered one of the best cities in America. So yes, it's the people. Thank you.
Can I, can I say something real quick, actually, related to the school district question? So it's my, is my understanding that there wasn't really a parent-driven committee behind. These maps that are being put out on social media. So we can see how, and that's led to a lot of upset people. And I, I have to say, we can see how important that is to have the grassroots input on big changes. And we've talked about it for the last hour and a half as well. So I, again, I think we have opportunities there and I'd love to be a part of that.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Awesome. Great.
Just a quick, uh, quick sentence from myself, Hon, is that right? I think compassion, care and social empathy has, is a very important part of our, you know, role place as well as council people, whether we get elected or not. I think that continuity of, you know, social understanding and bringing forward our humanity in a diverse, evolving social fabric is very important. And I think John is right, you know, uh, people really has, you know, stood up and, you know, carried the weight of bringing the city forward. And that's our hopes are, like, you know, our optimism that we will continue to work together. And make Dublin not only uh, good, good for our generation, but, you know, transition to Dublin to the future generation as well. So then they can take charge of this beautiful city as well, so.
I, I might.
Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
Thank you. I might only add that if we listen to the passion of everybody here tonight, we know what makes Dublin such a special place. And so it, it really is an honor to serve and it, it's an honor to, to be with this group today. Um, and it really does reflect on our ability to come together and bring local democracy um, into action. So thank you so much. Thank you for all of us that participated and all of you that spent your evening with us. Thank you.
John, I think you were trying to say something?
Yes, um, thank you, Hon. Um, I definitely agree with John and since that, uh, the people. Have made this um, city, um, a great city. Uh, they have done a, a wonderful job. Um, in nineteen seventy, there were only about uh, seven hundred people in the Dublin, um, uh, little farming village. And now here we are over fifty thousand, um, some, uh, um, uh, five decades, uh, six decades later. And so we've um, come a long, a long way. Now, I do think that, um, we'll have to keep doing, keep including the people in the decision-making process. Uh, with uh, continuous communication, better engagement, uh, uh, with our residents. And I do believe that the future is bright. Um, and so I'm eternal optimistic. Uh, and that all of us here, uh, will continue to do a great job for the city, um, now and into the future. Thank you.
Awesome. Uh, Wendy, I think you were just unmuted.
Yeah, I'd like to, uh, I'd like to thank everyone that attended tonight and. And to, to really just reinforce what Kathy said, it's, it's so inspiring to be on this panel with these accomplished people. Who care enough about our community and care enough about the residents to step up and um, and, and vie for the honor to serve. And to everyone that is attending tonight, we want to make it as easy as possible for you to engage with us, of course, but. You, please keep showing up because when the residents engage, it makes a difference. And we can't do this alone. I mean, we're, we're, we're looking for the opportunity to represent you. But this council is yours, so please take the time, do your homework on all of us. Uh, vote wisely, but whatever you do and whoever wins, just keep showing up because it matters. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, Dr. Lynn.
Yeah, actually, um, the only thing I was gonna say too is I agree that the success of Dublin isn't just one person, it's a whole bunch of people. And one group of people that I think often get forgotten are the city employees, the city staff, the city planners who have done all this wonderful work and they guide the city council. They're the ones that are listening to the people of Dublin and I want to actually thank them as well too. But also, as Wendy said, you know, thank the people of Dublin because they are the people that make Dublin great. And so as Wendy said, keep, keep showing up, keep, um, your voices heard, uh, keep talking with us because this, you guys are the future of Dublin. So thank you.
That's awesome. Thank you all. Uh, so let's uh, conclude tonight. Just remembered, all the voters out there, your voice matters. Voting is how we shape the future of our community. So I encourage each of you to make sure you go vote. Also encourage your family, friends and people around you to go vote. If you are considering the option to vote by absentee ballot, make sure you're sending the application by October twenty eighth. And return the ballot by November fourth. So thank you all for attending and have a good night. Remember, go vote. Thank you.
Hey, Hon, can we do a quick ten-second commercial about the Nexus Candidate Forum, which is the Dublin School Board? Uh, that is on October seventeenth.
Yes.
Uh, I just post, post the link over there. Hopefully everybody can join that as well. Uh, in the meantime, we, we hope to continue engaging with all the wonderful candidates tonight. And we have some questions that didn't get answered. Hopefully we can find another opportunity.
Hey, Hon, sorry.
Yeah.
Can I ask you to uh, announce the Candidates Night of the Asian American Commerce Group on?
Uh, please, you, you can announce it.
Yeah, because uh, the Asian American Commerce Group is also holding a Candidates Night at the Ode's Restaurant. On October twenty second at, from five thirty to eight P M. So the marketing director, Mark Arbigan, is going to reach out to each one of you and hopefully you can make it uh, on that night, October twenty second. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you all.
So Dublin Chamber is hosting a Candidates Night as well on October sixteenth.
Yes, October sixteenth. Lots of opportunity and thank you all for really volunteering yourself, your service to the city. I am, and we are all very grateful for that. Thank you.